Okay, well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August 11, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. And this morning, it is really great to have Father Papa Giorgio back who will lead us in our opening prayer and invocation. Good to see you, Popfather. Come on up, please. And then Deputy Peter Junco will lead us in the place of leading. Those who will enable, please stand.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, I mean, we have a looking comfort of the Spirit of truth, present in all places and filling all things, the treasure of blessings, and the giver of life. Come and dwell in us and pleasant from every stain and save our souls, gracious one. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mother have mercy on us. We offer thanksgiving to you, Lord, for all your gifts and blessings. We humbly come to you and ask that you may send upon us your heavenly spirit to enlighten our hearts and minds, give us of your wisdom and knowledge. Help us to know your will for your people whom we serve. Guide us in all our decisions to do what is best for them. Help us to shine with your love and compassion. Grant us your peace and your love. Most especially, oh Lord, we ask that you send upon us your healing grace to protect us and heal us from all viruses and diseases that threaten and disrupt our lives. We ask for strength and wisdom for our doctors, scientists, and first responders to the challenge of the pandemic we are faced with. We ask for healing for those who are sick, repose and peace for those who have died, and comfort and consolation for their families. We praise you, we bless you, and we worship you, Lord, for glorified is your name, of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and forever and unto the ages of ages. Amen.
Good morning. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. It's really great to see you again. And for those who don't know, Father Papa Giorgio is from the Holy Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church. And it's always great to have him leading us in the invocation. I'd also ask us for a moment of silence for Dorothy H Bishop, otherwise better known as Dottie Bishop, who passed away Saturday. For 19 years, she led this county as our county attorney. And I'd just like you to join me in a moment of silence and lift her up in prayer, please. May flight of angels guide her to her rest. All right, we have a public hearing today to expend $100,000 or more for professional services for IT purposes. I think our new Director of Information Services, Kimberly Lemley, will lead us in that discussion.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. We ask that you conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for professional services needed to incorporate social distancing capabilities in Cobb County courtrooms through audiovisual technology. Notice of this public hearing for this project was advertised in the Marietta Daily Journal on July 24, 2020, July 31, 2020, and August 7, 2020.
Okay, so just the, I'd like to give you the rules here. Unlimited number of speakers, three minutes per speaker, and if you let us know who you are and where you live in the county, we'd appreciate it. So that, and now the public hearing is open to discuss expending $100,000 or more for professional services needed to incorporate social distancing capabilities in Cobb County courtrooms through audiovisual technology. Would anybody like to speak to this issue? Amy, please.
Okay, everybody knows I'm Amy Barnes. I'm from Marietta. I do fully support the expenditure for audiovisual technology. I hope, most importantly, it goes for magistrate courts as well, because we do have a large eviction docket, state court, dockets are so overloaded. It's, I can't even, I can't even express what it's like to stand in those courtrooms. So at this point, I think it is a lifesaving measure, and I fully support the expenditure to improve our courtrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Any other comments? Please, sir. Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Brendan Murphy. I serve as the Chief Magistrate Judge here in Cobb County. I want to address this matter by saying two thank yous. The first thank you would be to Kimberly Lemley and her IS team. They kept us up and running. When everybody thought this was going to be a short-term issue, they got us immediate help to keep the courts running. Magistrate Court has remained open 24 hours a day. We never closed. We never canceled domestic violence TPO hearings. We were able to get folks that were nonviolent offenders out of the jail immediately by reviewing their bonds and keeping PC and bond hearings going. And then I want to say thank you to this body, because consideration of this item is going to keep us going for the long haul. Currently, kind of like Ms. Barnes said, in magistrate court, I have one courtroom technologically capable of virtual hearings. By approving this item, and this item applies to all the courts, but in magistrate court alone, I'll have five times the courtroom capability for virtual hearings. And that's essential as we go forward to address the backlog in civil cases, in eviction cases, et cetera. So I very much appreciate this body's consideration of this item and IS's hard work keeping us going. I had a couple of days when I was quarantined, and I was able to conduct court from my living room because of the hard work of IS. And this is, this item is going to keep that going so that this is a premier county. So when a lawyer comes up and says, why can't we hold this hearing virtual or that hearing virtual? The answer isn't anymore, I don't have the hardware, or I don't have the people. The answer will be, let's do it, let's go, let's keep everybody safe. So thank you all.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. All right, public comment. Mr. Ruhl, how many commentators do we have today? Two, okay, all right.
First one's Amy Barnes.
Welcome back. I hope that Judge Byrne answered your first question. John, sorry, Judge Murphy answered your first question.
Do I get frequent flyer miles? Okay, I'm here to address the, and I'm very sorry for the death that we had to, that you guys have had to deal with, deal with the small business grants program. I have done extensive research. I've put in over 100 hours of work on this matter, and I am seeing vague assertions from Stephanie Cox about, and I have an audio recording of her saying that CARES Act itself restricted any and all aid to business owners in bankruptcy. However, when you read Section 1113 of the CARES Act, it explicitly shields people who are in bankruptcy from repercussions that would otherwise happen with the receipt of this money. The section that comes immediately after that, 1114, charges the Small Business Administration or the administration with their duty of carrying out the provisions in this act, the CARES Act, and also demands that they formulate restrictions and regulations within a 15 period, 15-day period. Now, I have done further research, and it's come to light that the SBA might be applying lending regulations to what is essentially a cash grant. Now, I have case law on hand that goes both ways, and this is not something that is a loan. And this money is designed to help people like me who have been in business for literal decades, two years of which in Cobb, survive this pandemic. Now, I got smart, and I filed for bankruptcy knowing in December that the courthouses would be closed, knowing in December that the businesses would close, and that this would be as bad as it is. I knew that. I filed for bankruptcy in anticipation. I don't think that this financial situation should be used to restrict this. Now, I understand the county is restricted in and of itself, but before Stephanie Cox opens her mouth, she needs to actually know what she's talking about. And I believe that to prevent any litigation, that to prevent any problems in future, I have a solution. That the county come forward with a preset understanding for people to hand over, that any and all documentation, rules, regulations be put in a repository so we don't have to wonder. We can look. And I think it is a hardship on this county that the county doesn't have all of the documentation on hand. And I know that the people who run everything are good people, but we're all in a sticky situation. I just can't look at $20,000 on the table and accept a no without digging, without a possible, a struggle, because my home is on the line, my custody of my children is on the line. You know, they take people's children because they don't make enough money. And I'm in that situation. I'm battling my own family for custody, and my business, my heart, my life, my IT work might not be here if I can't get this help. I have to hire people to upgrade my business for this economy, and I pray that there's a way that I can get this help. And I fully support this county. Now, I'm moving forward on this, not just for me, but for everybody else who is in probably a worse situation than me. I'm here, not just for me, but for the success of this county as a whole, because when one person succeeds, everybody gains. So God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Ms. Bedeepur?
For the record, I'm Jacqueline Bedeepur, the Chair of the Cobb County Democratic Party, and I live in Commission District 2. So 57% of voters in Cobb County used an absentee ballot for the June 9 primary, significantly more than in previous elections. Why? Because of the pandemic, and because absentee ballot applications and instructions were mailed to every registered active voter, making it easily accessible, front of mind, and easily understood. Absentee voting is the safest way to vote in a pandemic without risking exposure and community spread of this virus. And absentee voting was the only saving grace of the June 9 election, for what transpired in the voting precincts on Election Day in this county was a complete debacle. In fact, Chairman Boyes, you called for the resignation of Brad Raffensperger several days after the election. In Cobb, we saw four- and five-hour lines, voters waiting in blazing heat, braving thunderstorms without shelter just to vote. 39 Cobb precincts did not open on time. National press described our election as a meltdown. So what's changed? The pandemic has only gotten worse. Voter turnout on November 3 will be at least two and a half times higher, and Brad Raffensperger apparently got the memo from Republican leadership. Apparently, so did the Cobb Board of Commissioners. The Board of Elections comprised of four Republican appointees and one Democrat, in a public meeting, discussed a proposal to mail out absentee ballot applications to all registered active Cobb voters. The proposal was unanimously approved. Janine Evler was authorized to submit a funding request to the Board of Commissioners for How did you respond? You voted behind closed doors to not let this proposal see the light of day. You refused to add it as an agenda item to this meeting. No public discussion, no public vote, you simply did not want to go on record. Why did you do this? Well, since you did this without the benefit of sunshine, we can only guess. Republicans all over the country are now saying the quiet part out loud. You don't want people to vote, and you are certainly not going to help us do so, and certainly not in a pandemic that you think is a hoax. The Republican Speaker of the Georgia House said it out loud. Trump is saying it out loud and sabotaging the post office. You, the Cobb Board of Commissioners, did not want to say it out loud, so you buried it. Commissioner Ott eventually went on record with the MDJ, saying he believed the mailing of applications had caused too much confusion. How much confusion will be caused when other groups refuse to watch this train wreck and step into the void created by your failed leadership? There was confusion, of course, on behalf of undertrained, understaffed, and under-resourced poll workers on Election Day. Too much confusion, you say, and yet somehow 57%, 107,000 primary election voters saw their way through this alleged confusion to cast absentee ballots. The Secretary of State says not to worry. He has technology for absentee ballot applications called an online portal, as if anyone at this point has any faith in new technology coming out of the Secretary of State's office. Cobb Elections has made it marginally easier for voters to complete an online application, but it still must be accessed, printed, and returned the same way as before. To my knowledge, Chairman Boyes, you still have not gone on the public record concerning the mailing of absentee ballot applications to Cobb voters. Yesterday, on your campaign webpage, you presented your arguments as a candidate to your political supporters, but not before the citizens of Cobb County in your role as an elected official. The Board of Elections never sought funding through the general operating budget. They asked for $222,000 out of the $132 million in CARES funds for COVID response and relief, 0.16% of the CARES funds under your control, so that all voters would be sent an absentee ballot application so they could easily choose safe and efficient voting during a raging pandemic. While acknowledging that the pandemic is likely to have long-ranging economic and social impact, you seem to dismiss the importance of ensuring safe access to voting as part of your COVID response. You say we can't afford it. I ask you, how can we not afford it? Do you really want upwards of 400,000 voters in Cobb polling locations on Election Day during a raging pandemic? Because that is the reality you're queuing up for. I'll close by asking the Commissioners present here today to take you up on your offer. You said to your campaign supporters that if one of the Commissioners made a motion to add this item to the agenda today, you would second it. So I ask one of you to make that motion.
Ms. Bedeepur, your time's up.
And I ask you, Chairman Boyes, to be true to your word.
Chairman, that's all the sun for the comment.
What I'd like to do here is ask the Board's indulgence, and I noticed that Chief Johnson in the back, is in the back with a number of people from the Fire Department. So what I'd like to do is just go ahead and just make a motion out of order, out of sequencer on the agenda, to recommend the appointment of William T. Johnson as the Fire Chief effective August 11, 2020. All right, we have a second, a discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Pass is five to zero. Congratulations, Chief.
Ladies, come on down. It's a big day, and we want to share it with his team.
Whew, well, thank you very much. To the Commissioners, thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for entrusting me to be your Fire Chief, Dr. McMorris, Director Crowder, wherever you are. I'm very grateful. I've had a lot of support during this time, this command staff, all the members of the organization, and people outside the organization who have reached out to me to give me support, Chief Milligan, people like him. I cannot thank you all enough. I'm very honored, I'm humbled, and I'm excited. So thank you. I'm looking forward to this journey. And to my family, my wife. She's been a huge support as well, and so thank you. So, short and sweet, thank you.
The famous photo op.
Three, two, one, and that's it up.
Appreciate the Board working with me on that, and it'll be fun in about 10 years to take a look at that picture and say, who are all, do the names behind the masks. See if we can do that. Okay, a couple administrative matters here before we move on to the consent agenda and the regular agenda. First of all, I want to make a motion to add a couple items. One, to the consent agenda, I move that we add to the, vote to add to the non-agenda item under Consent Number 47, authorize a settlement of Cobb County versus Arlington Park Marietta LLC and others. Civil action file number 19-1-00061-40, Cobb County Superior Court pursuant to direction and within the terms as discussed in executive session on August 10, 2020, and authorize counsel prepare and execute any necessary documents for the purposes of settling ongoing litigation. Second, in discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass is five to zero. So it's added to the consent agenda. And then to add to the regular agenda, I'd like to make the motion that we add non-agenda item number 46 to authorize a contract for the sale of certain real property situated at 4489 Acworth Industrial Boulevard in Acworth, Georgia, not required for county purposes, to Heavenly Holdings LLC through the brokerage firms of McWhorter Realty Partners. We have a second on that. I have a second, any discussion? I know, I was looking at you. Give her time. Hundred percent. All right, any discussion? Call the question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Pass is five to zero. All right, with that, I'd like a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised, and authorize the execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. I have a second for that. Again, I will let it scroll through the consent agenda items here on the screen for those watching online.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Item number three.
Yes.
I was in discussion with the County Manager and also DA Holmes this morning. There's a mathematical error.
Okay.
It's supposed to be 20% of the grant to be a local match. That should be 25, 20,000. It is listed at 25,000. So I know there was discussion of making that change.
Okay.
To the agenda to reflect that over four years, it should be $80,000, not $100,000.
Okay.
And again, it's 20,000 a year, not 25.
Right. And the grant was 20%.
Correct.
Correct, right. So if we could have the, have that noted in the, in the record?
Chairman, this is Agenda Item Number 18, modified per correspondence from our County Manager and County Attorney. This pertains to the telework policy.
Let's see here.
Okay, I have 18 from, telework policy, yes.
Yeah, that's number 23.
Okay. Is that modified per this consent agenda?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And we also revise number 19 to authorize acceptance of the Flock License Plate Recognition System being donated by Biden Village, as discussed yesterday with Commissioner Ott. Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Cupid.
During public comment, there rose a request for us to consider our motion for voting on absentee ballots. Is this an appropriate time to bring that motion forward?
Yes, we could, what we can do is you can make the motion to bring it forward. I would, I will second it, like I told all Commissioners, I'll second anyone. And for your item, if it's going to be added to the agenda, it has to be a supermajority of four of the Commissioners supporting it, okay? So with that, if you want to, if you want to make the motion to add some to the consent to the agenda item, I'll, I'll entertain that motion now.
Yes, I do move that the Board add to the agenda discussion of absentee ballot mailing, mailing to all voters in Cobb County.
Okay, I'll second that for the purpose of discussion. And Commissioner Cupid, I'll let you have the floor first for discussion on this.
Okay, yes. Per what was shared, there is a lot of concern about the Board of Elections voting unanimously for us to mail out absentee ballots to all voters in Cobb County. There has been historical precedent of this Board to defer to the actions of the Board of Elections and recognition of our arms-length relationship to the Board of Elections. While we have recognized that we are in a role of advising them, and we know that we do approve their funding, I have not seen an instance where we have kept an item even from discussion of this Board, whether it be from appearing on the agenda or even having discussion in a work session. I am just as confused as many of our voters about how things transpired. I heard through word of mouth that this was not going to be on the agenda. The public perceived that there was an actual vote behind closed doors. I am not personally aware of there ever being a meeting behind closed doors to have discussion of this agenda item. I am aware, however, that the Director went and communicated with each Commissioner and received feedback. I can only perceive from hearsay what occurred, and from the result of this not being on the agenda, I can only perceive that what occurred is that there were not enough Commissioners that would support the passage of that item. However, again, looking at the precedent of this Board, I am not aware of us stopping the Board of Elections from even getting a matter on the agenda. I think that is a troubling path for us to take. We have not taken it in the past. I do not know why we are taking it now. I think that it's at least due to the public to have communication about this, to know why the Board that we appoint, that we helped to appoint, and that other elected officials helped to appoint, cannot make decisions that will be vetted out publicly by this Board, so that the public is aware of why we are making these decisions that we're making. So my motion today is not necessarily for a vote. I do not have a contract in front of me of how that would move forward. I'm simply asking for there to be public discussion as to why we didn't, why we took the stance, when I say we are collectively, because that we does not necessarily include me, but why this Board took the collective stance to not put that agenda item on our agenda.
Okay. Maybe else I could make a comment? Okay, so, a couple things. First of all, I appreciate everybody has the right to come up here and make public comment. Doesn't mean I have to agree with it, but I support. up here and make public comment. Doesn't mean I have to agree with it, but I support the right for, for open and transparent government. There was nothing secret about the agenda preparation for this, for this agenda item. The agenda preparations are open to the public. They're published. So I think that if there's anything that I would have an issue with, it's the assertion that this board does anything in secret without informing the full public of what our, what our motions are. Just because a step is taken is not popular by certain members of the, of the public. The fact that you would try to label this board as trying to hide something, you know, I find a little disturbing, particularly when in fact, the, the facts are well-known, that the agenda preparation is a public forum, as is all these meetings. Second of all, I'm the chairman of this, of this board. It's one of my things, one of my responsibilities to informally take the pulse of the board. If there's an agenda item that comes forward that I consider might be something that might be, that might have to be divisive, I do, I do some polling, because I don't believe that makes any sense to bring something to this, to this, to the public, knowing that the board doesn't support it. And quite honestly, this is the first one that I can think of in my three and a half years in office, where there was just generally no support for this motion. And I understand that the Board of Elections, you know, asked to Janine Ebbler to bring this to the board. But I'd like to know where the Board of Elections has been during this election. This board is the one that had to answer to all the criticism about all the things that happened at the polls, when in fact, we're, we're not, we have no oversight over that. What we do is we provide funding and significant funding to the Board of Elections, literally millions of dollars. And ladies and gentlemen, we still have unknown bills from the primary that we don't know we're going to have to pay yet, but I'm fully confident the board is going to be, is going to be paying those. So because on this one item that we choose not to support, something where the Board of Elections could have come to this board over three different public hearings and made it known to us that they are going to be asking for some funding and did nothing, is not on us, it's on them. I think we need to lay, every now and then, we need to leave, leave responsibility exactly where it is owed. In this case, it lays on the chairman of the Board of Elections and the board. I have no idea why they waited until after three public hearings to bring this forward to the board, knowing that generally, our practice of at least, well, I've been the chairman, is that once we pass the, the budget and the mileage rate, we move on and have, we have a light session during the summer to move on, you know, to take a break because of the immense responsibility this board has, and which I take great pleasure in every now and then, allow, you know, arranging the schedule to let the board have some more time for their family members and their personal lives. But no, they chose to drop this thing after the, after the budget hearings, and then put us in a situation looking like we're the bad guys. Well, I'm not going to accept that this time. I'm not going to accept it this time. We have done our part. If there's, there are some concerns or issues or opinions that we could have used CARES funding for this. Well, ladies and gentlemen, $132 million may seem like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but we have more requirements under CARES funding than we have funding provided by Congress to take care of the needs in this, in this community. And we have to be very careful here how we allocate that money. We can't just be giving it to a specific sector because they feel like they, they need head of line privileges. Voting is important, but you know something? So is food insecurity. So is paying rent. So is mortgage assistance. So is providing funding for the schools. So is providing funding for public health. So is providing funding for the cities so they can do their jobs. So is providing funding for strategic piling, for personal protective equipment, so this county can do its job to let, to provide the services that you expect of us. So, if there's, if there's, if there's the implication or the impression that this is something that we were trying to do behind closed doors, this is just one of many hard decisions that this board has to make during a very challenging time called a pandemic. So I polled the board to see if there was any support for this motion. There was not. Commissioner Cupid texted me over the weekend before this, asked me if there was, if there was support for this. I let her know, no, there was not. All right? But I've also let everybody know very clearly, because if this is, if there's such as a, 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 an transparent project, how is it that some people know that I would have told, that I know, that I have let it be known, that if a commissioner wants a continuous discussion, I would second it. I've provided a path forward, but it's incumbent upon the commissioner who wants to have this thing carried forward to go find the votes for it. But I, I, the door's there. And I, and I made it very clear that if there's, if there's an opportunity to do that, I would welcome the discussion for it. Doesn't mean I'd support it, but I would always welcome discussion for it, because this is kind of a regard I have for every one of the commissioners. They are all entitled to bring the issues forward. I will always be the second, but I won't necessarily always support it. But for the purpose of discussion, I'll always second it. For in this case here, there are a lot of factors that go into our decisions, is what we're doing. But for me personally, that while I think that there's, you know, the, the, the voting is certainly an important one, there are opportunities to address this in other matters and other ways. And because the Board of Elections chose not to do that, I don't appreciate them coming out, you know, after all our actions through the summer, to all of a sudden wake up and realize, hmm, maybe we need to have another way to address this issue. The state could provide the funding for this, because after all, ladies and gentlemen, elections are a state responsibility that we fund. This county funds those things. We're mandated to do this, but we pay the money for it. And you know something? Every now and then, there is enough money left in the bank account. So, while I appreciate that this is an important item, I just want to be known out there, there are a lot of other things out there during this pandemic do have to address. And I thought that $250,000 for this could be better used in other items, in other ways, support other important exigent emergencies and continues to be happening in the county right now.
So Chairman, is it my understanding from what you're saying that they did not bring this act, they did not bring this request timely enough to the board for us to consider it?
Where were they during this process, Commissioner Cupid?
Which process?
During the budget process.
They're not requesting budget funds. They're requesting CARES.
It could have been under the budget consideration. Two years ago, in 2018, the board, the chairman of that board came to this board and asked for additional funding for positions on the board. He's very well aware of the process. Why he chose not to use it this time is beyond me.
The dynamics of COVID are changing every day and every week. So this is not really apples-to-apples comparison to what occurred in 2018. It's my understanding that CARES dollars were requested for this agenda item because it is in response to the impact of COVID, and there are concerns about health and safety of constituents in Cobb County, which would mean that the $132 million that we received is an eligible resource for us to put towards this item. We have had different organizations come before this board at different times during this pandemic to ask us to fund different measures. Why the Board of Elections is being criticized for bringing forward their concerns in response to addressing a civic priority in response to COVID, as all the other organizations, is beyond me. I don't, I don't understand why we are pitting ourselves against them and holding them to a different standard that we, that we've held any other organization or department when it comes to bringing us, to bringing us concerns with respect to COVID. In fact, we just heard a matter today to look at social distancing within the courts. Our process typically has been if, again, the Elections Board has an item for us to consider, we would at least hear it. If not in a formal BLC meeting, we have considered it in a work session. If there was opportunity for us to allow that to be vetted, that would have been a perfect time for it to have light of day. But I do agree with the public. This has not been vetted in the light of day. I texted you. You said you polled commissioners. You did not poll me. I heard through the grapevine from people who I typically don't hear from, saying that they heard about this and asking me, what's going on? I did not know that there was a conclusion that this would not be on the agenda. I think an appropriate time for us to have made that decision would have been either in a work session or in a BLC meeting, especially when a public body like the Elections Board put out that they were going to submit this measure for consideration on August 11. There's been two news media articles that I found just very quickly that stated, this is what the board proposed to the commissioners for it to be considered on August 11. And all of a sudden, it's not being considered. So if that can happen in the public sphere, and we typically hear elections matters in the public sphere, I don't understand why we're removing, why we removed consideration of that request from the public sphere.
Well, a couple things. First of all, the Board of Elections has received money under CARES legislation from this board. All right? And second of all, there was plenty of opportunity for the Board of Elections, I stated earlier, if they were going, if they were going to consider this as an important item, they could have informed me, approached me about it, so we could have discussed it about putting it on the agenda. But instead, they go and vote on this thing and then drop it on our lap without any prior consultation.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt you, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Turn off your mic. Thank you. Okay, so let's go back to the original request that we received from Janine Ebbler. This was dated, hold on, let me cross back here, on July 29. It was the original email that she sent out asking the attached agenda item. If you read the agenda item, nowhere in this agenda item does it mention using CARES fund to do the absentee ballots. When we had an informal discussion in the hallway, my first question back to you was, well, if they're so worried about mailing absentee ballots for the November election, where was this conversation for the election that's happening today? Because again, COVID is here for this runoff election. This runoff election is just important as any other election that we have in issue, in having a voter's right to vote. So why wasn't the Board of Elections worried about sending out absentee ballots for this election as well? Which was my comment, my question back to you. And you responded, that's a good question. And it just kind of sat there. So I think while we're sitting here arguing if we're using CARES funding, if we're using general fund money, the agenda item was to come from the general fund. The bottom line is the Board of Elections wasn't concerned about COVID being here for the runoff election. People who go to the runoff election, and I did this personally, because I went and voted in person. I walked in, I registered vote for the runoff election. I was asked if I wanted to complete a form to do an absentee ballot at that time. So everyone had an opportunity. If you look at this, we've got District 2 and District 4 that has to go to the polls right now to vote. Plus, we've got an election up in one of our house districts for my district. That's a runoff election. So you've got over 50% of the county going in today, that should be going in today to exercise their right to vote on an election that will put the candidate on the ballot for November. So where was the Board of Elections concerned about this election? Because this election is just as important as November.
I would just say that if the, if the Board of Elections item is not on the agenda, they do not have fair opportunity to even vet these questions. I know from my observation, they have had public meetings where the public has come in and criticized what took place in the prior election. And a lot of things, again, continue to be in flux every day. There was a lot of waiting to see what was going to happen from the state. No one knew for certain that the state was not going to fund this. So, I mean, we can point fingers and say, what could have been done, what shouldn't have been done, they should have consulted us. But short of a communication and an open discussion, all we're doing is, is, all of this is just conjecture. And to me, this is a healthy process. These questions are important. But if we don't get matters put on in a public agenda, we do not have the opportunity to even discuss it openly.
Mr. Burrow.
Pardon?
Okay, my, my concern here is that we are discussing something that is not on the agenda. And are we voting to add it on this agenda? And is that legal to do without a super majority? Or tell us what we're doing here, please?
Sure. As I understood Commissioner Cupid's motion in the second, it was for discussion regarding the item, not necessarily to add it. There was a second, then we, the board at that point in time started discussing the items. There was a general consensus related to that. There was not actually a vote for a discussion or not, but the board started participating in a discussion. And so we recognize that as a general consensus for a discussion.
But, but, but there's going to be, there's a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry? Right.
There's a motion on the floor for a discussion. And if the board wants to formally vote on whether or not to have a discussion, you could do that. But the practice at this point in time has been, the board has been participating in a discussion, so we recognize that as a general consensus that the, that the motion carried.
No, the motion did not carry.
We haven't voted on it yet.
We hadn't voted on it yet.
We haven't voted.
We're discussing the motion, which is to add it to the agenda.
That's correct.
That's all, we're not, we're not adding, we have not added it to the agenda.
Correct.
It, if, if I understood Commissioner Cupid's motion was for there to be a discussion about it.
I think her intent was to have, to add it to the agenda. That's the way I understood it.
Yes, her motion was to add it to the agenda.
That's what, that's how I understood it. And that's what the discussion is, whether or not we're going to add it to the agenda. And then my point was, to add it to the agenda, we need a super majority. But before we vote on that, we have to have the discussion. Of the motion, that's correct.
That's correct.
Right. So what's on the floor right now is a motion to add it to the agenda item.
To today's agenda.
That's correct. All right.
Does this constitute an emergency to add it to the agenda today?
Well, the board, any board member can make the motion anytime they want to. We're just going to have the discussion. But we're, we're almost finished with the discussion. I'm going to call the question.
I would just say, if the majority of, I mean, I think the county attorney was alluding to this, and I would ask for confirmation. But if there's a motion for discussion, and the board in majority begins to discuss it, the actions in a sense have ratified that motion by having a majority of the board participate.
That was not your motion.
No, your motion was to add it to the agenda.
Your motion was to add it, and it was not to discuss it.
That's not, that's not my, my motion. Yes, my motion was for discussion, or for us to, to add this for, to the agenda for discussion.
Right. Add it to the agenda item. Add it to the agenda.
I would like the county attorney to please provide some clarification.
I'm sorry, this takes just a second before it comes back on. If we need to, we can go back and listen to the, to the particular agenda. My understanding was it was to discuss it, to be added on to the agenda or not. So.
Well, all right, either way, if it's still, you still need a super, you still need to have a majority vote to add it, to add it for discussion, right?
Well, well, in order for you to add the agenda item, it would take.
It's a super majority.
It would take a super majority.
But just to discuss it, or further discussion, you'd still need three votes.
To discuss it, yes.
That's correct. But I haven't, we, I haven't called that question yet. So what we're discussing is whether or not we want to add it, whether we want to discuss it.
Correct.
Correct. So I'm just, I'm discussing whether or not we want to discuss it. And as part of that discussion, it's kind of expanded into a wider discussion about the issue. I understand that part, okay? But we all know that I, I have a tendency to let the board have wider discussions about an issue for the purpose of a more informed discussion. So right now, the motion on the floor, as Commissioner Cupid's saying, is that she wants to have a, she's, her motion is to, to add this agenda item for discussion. Okay? That's, that's the, that's the motion on the floor, correct? It's all right. I'm just going to make sure that.
As I, as I understand it, in consultation with a clerk.
All right. So, and I seconded it for the purpose of discussion. Now, for this motion to be carried, it has to have three votes.
For the discussion.
That's correct. For this motion to succeed, it needs to have three votes, correct?
Correct.
All right, so.
To add it to today's agenda.
Just for discussion purposes. If we want to continue the discussion, it needs three votes.
Yes, it needs to be.
Well, you still have to have, any motion, any motion requires discussion.
Right, Mr. Chairman, but here's the problem. This is, this is being morphed into, from, the motion was to add it to the agenda.
That's right.
The discussion was simply about adding it to the agenda. Okay? And that was all that was being discussed. And so the vote needs to be taken on, will it be added to the agenda? Yes or no?
What the county attorney's saying is, is what we're voting on is whether we're going to discuss it.
But that's not what was, that's not what the motion that Commissioner Cupid made said.
In order for us to do that, we would have to go into recess. I'd have to download the stuff to our file, go upstairs, listen to it. So it's probably going to take me 15 to 30 minutes in order for us to play that back verbatim on how it was done.
All right. But what I, what I heard from, from Commissioner Cupid was, is that her motion was to discuss it. Correct? Commissioner Cupid?
I move that we add it to today's agenda for discussion. And you, as we have done with every, similar motions in general.
Right.
Somebody will move the motion forward. Someone will second it, and there will be discussion. discussion, and there will be a vote.
Correct.
So what was taking place is there was a discussion prior to a vote.
That's right, there's always discussion prior to a vote. So now I'm going to, we're going to call the question, Commissioner Cupid's motion, which is to add to the, which is to add this issue to the agenda for discussion.
Yes, but I must say, in discussing it, the discussion has already been had. We can vote on the motion, but I think it's clear from the public where the Board already sits on this matter.
Well, let's vote on it and find out. So with that, I call, I call the question. Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion fails. Commissioner Cupid supports, and Commissioners Ott, Gamble, and Burrow, and Chairman Boyce oppose. All right. So let's go on to the regular agenda.
Good afternoon, Chairman and the Board. The first item for DOT, for consideration by the Board, is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with the Georgia Department, Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $59,330 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on the Bellsbury Road at Turner Road-Dixon Road project.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises LLC, savings to the project in the amount of $56,823.10 for intersection improvements on Postover Trip Road at Hembry Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you for the savings, that was a huge project.
It was, yes, ma'am, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelera Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $537,200 for Bellsbury Road at Turner Road-Dixon Road project.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Bondwin Paving Company Inc., with savings to the project in the amount of $112,615.15 for the intersection improvements on Blackwell Road at Autumn Ridge Parkway.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, raise your right hand, all in favor. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the contract with Triscakes Inc. in an amount not to exceed $1,500 for Bellsbury Road Sidewalk.
Commissioner Burrow again.
Again. This is the first time I've had all the majority of the DOT projects. Motion to approve.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Bondwin Paving Company Inc., with savings to the project in the amount of $258,760.26 for construction of Paces Ferry Road, Paces Ferry Road Sidewalks at the CSX Railroad.
Commissioner Ott.
Motion approved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises Inc., with savings to the, a savings of $32,231.09 for drainage system repairs on Chattahoochee Plantation Drive.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelera Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $64,800 for drainage system repairs on Seaberry Court.
Commissioner Cupid.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. And then our last item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4, and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel for Kennesaw Mountain pedestrian improvements, Project Number X 2404, and adopt a resolution in order in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second, discussion, please raise your right hand, all in favor. Passes five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Support Services, Information Services first.
All right, good morning again. Our first four items this morning are all joint items with property management and are all related to our new data center build. These projects are eligible projects under the 2016 SPOS Project Support Services Facilities Improvement Program X 0920. On September 10th, 2019, the Board approved a contract with an architectural firm whose scope of work includes design of renovations to an existing county building for conversion to a new data center. The first item is to approve a contract with Nixon Power Services LLC for $173,027.14 for an emergency generator, which is needed to provide backup power to protect technology, protect our technology resources in the event, event the building experiences a loss of utility power in the data center. Additionally, $75,000 is required to prepare the physical infrastructure to install the generator. The total project cost is an amount not to exceed $248,027.14. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Nixon Power Services LLC in the amount of $173,027.14 for installation of a new generator at the new Cobb County Data Center, authorize procurement of miscellaneous items related to the equipment installation in amount not to exceed $75,000, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved. I'm not repeating.
Second, any discussion? Please raise your right hand if you support. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our second item is to approve a contract with Marietta Power for the installation of an additional electrical power feed in the new Cobb County Data Center. As part of the renovation, the building requires installation of an additional electrical power feed to provide redundancy and increase load capability to the data center. Marietta Power was the only company responsive to this request and has provided a quote of $249,600 to install this service. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Marietta Power in amount not to exceed $249,600 for the installation of an additional electrical power feed in the new data center, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our third item is to approve a contract with Garland Design Building Solutions Inc. for exterior walls and roof renovations at the data center, the new Cobb County Data Center, under provisions of the Racine County, Wisconsin, Omnia Partners Master Agreement PW 1925. This is a 2016 SPOS Project Support Services Facilities Improvement Programs X 0920 and X 0921. Garland Design built solutions, provided pricing to accomplish the complete contract work, including exterior walls and roof renovations for $450,986. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Garland Design Building Solutions Inc. in an amount not to exceed $450,986 for restoration of the existing exterior wall and roof at the new Cobb County Data Center, authorize a 10% contingency in an amount not to exceed $45,099, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott.
Sure, just a word before the motion, and if folks are wondering why we're referring to Racine County, Wisconsin, many times purchasing will go, there is kind of a collection of master contracts that different counties and cities have, and you can kind of go into it, we've used it before to purchase buses, you just get a better deal that way. So, motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our fourth item is to approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Service under the provisions of a Cobb County Master Agreement for the installation of internal power equipment at the new Cobb County Data Center. Property Management reviewed the scope of work with purchasing and established the project is guideline compliant through a county master agreement with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Service. All-Star provided pricing to accomplish the complete contract work in an amount not to exceed $85,000. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Service in an amount not to exceed $85,000 for installation of internal power equipment at the new Cobb County Data Center, authorize a 10% contingency in an amount not to exceed $8,500, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
All right, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you. And our last item this morning is a joint item with the Police Department and Property Management to request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement with Controlled Access Inc. for the installation of the county's enterprise access control system at the new police headquarters building located at 430 Commerce Park Drive. This project is an eligible project under the 2016 SPOS Support Services Technology Improvement Programs X 0020. The three pre-qualified county security vendors were asked to submit quotes, and Controlled Access Inc. was the lowest-priced responsive vendor. The total project cost is an amount not to exceed $177,183, and includes a 10% contingency of $16,108 to cover unexpected project costs. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement with Controlled Access Inc. in an amount not to exceed $177,183 to install the county's enterprise access control system at the new police headquarters building, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, County Manager. Public safety has one item, and it's to authorize the revenue received from a lease with LGE Community Credit Union to be appropriated back into the police headquarters 2016 SPOS Budget Program 1042. On August 28, 2018, the Board authorized the purchase of property from LGE under the terms of a contract and the lease of the premises to the seller pursuant to the approved lease terms. On August 30th, the purchase of the property closed and the lease was entered into with LGE. To date, a total of $649,087.05 in lease proceeds have been received as associated with the LGE building at 430 Commerce Park Drive. Future revenue, monthly rental payments in the amount of $5,733 for August through November 30th, 2020, will total $22,932, and this will be appropriated back into the 2016 SPOS Budget Program 1042. Recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners authorize the revenue received in the amount of $649,087.05, and future revenues received from a lease agreement with LGE Community Credit Union to be appropriated back into the police headquarters SPOS budget, authorize the corresponding budget appropriation, and further authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, I just have one question before I make the motion. Since this state's future, are we limiting it to November 30th? If they're not.
We, we have a firm commitment that we will be able to occupy, start occupying that building at the end of November, but we also know that things happen, and so to cover that, we put all future lease payments that we receive.
And all future, okay.
Yes.
I just didn't want it to have to come back if it's past November 30th.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last item, number 46, who's bringing that? Where's property manage, property management, or Support Services, or, where's Bill Riley, Pat Riley? When all else fails, call for Pat Riley.
No, I'll be happy to bring it.
Okay.
Chairman, the item number 46 is regarding the sale of 4489 Acworth Industrial Boulevard. We ask that the, the Board follow the recommendation of the agenda item as presented regarding that sale.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I raised my hand.
Okay.
Sorry. As we discussed previously, I can't support this because of the whole, what's going to happen in the building, and I just think it's inappropriate.
Okay, all right. Any comments? Well, that'll call a question. If you're in favor, please raise your right hand. If you're opposed, motion pass, motion passes. Four to one with Commissioner Otten opposition. All right, thank you. Okay, I believe that takes care of the agenda items. Any further public comment? I see none, okay? And so today, I'll start with, for Commissioner comments, I'll start with Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, first I want to give a huge shout out to my assistant, Ryan Williams, and all other county employees who are assisting today with the elections that are happening. Thank you for going out and ensuring the elections run smoothly today. Congratulations are in order to our Cobb County 4-Hers. These five students were given $500 college scholarships, and this was contributed by the Marvin Hansard Scholarship Fund to make it possible. The first picture was Kayla Fox, the next is Kennedy Devo, Israel Pharo, Dubrichi Chaka Kawazi, I'm sorry, and then Major Alhal Hamad. So congratulations to our students for all you have accomplished. Next coming is the Cobb Library Bookmobile. Our Bookmobile team met with Sandra Davis and Carrie Zimmerman last week, and they are going to be partnering with delivering books to kids in our at-risk communities. Sandra and Carrie will be identifying community parking locations to ensure safety of our kids. Once we have the locations and we work on a schedule, we will get that out for everyone to know. So thank you to our library staff for helping make this come about. Next, we had a groundbreaking ceremony, and yes, we all were social distanced except for the pictures, but we had some pleasure throwing some dirt at our new recreation center at Admus Park. This is in Kennesaw. Mayor Derek Easterling, Cobb Parks Director Jimmy Geese, and I got to break ground on the new athletic facility that will be coming in the fall of 2021. Phase one will build a 25,000-square-foot facility with two basketball courts, a fitness room, and office space. Phase two will add another 17,000 square feet to the center, and will feature a third basketball court, gymnastics space, and meeting. Our Cobb County Master Gardeners is doing a Grow Virtually session, and we have a meeting tonight at 7:30 called Fall Vegetable Gardening. Terry Carter, who is our Cobb Master Gardener and Family and Consumer Science Program Assistant for the UGA Extension, will speak to us about what to do now to prepare for your fall vegetable gardens. What will you be planning? Get tips and ideas from Terry. You can go to our website to find out the information for the Zoom meeting at the extension. And then here are our Master Gardener volunteers. The Cobb Extension Horticulture-Agriculture Department has been busier than ever. As Mr. Ott knows, it's been a great growing season for figs. During the pandemic, many people are at home with time on their hands. This leads them into their yards. Thank goodness our horticulture staff has our loyal Master Gardener volunteers to help out. Dedicated phone lines are available for any garden insect, turf, and/or soil sample and plant disease questions one may have. That is all, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner O'Leary-Burrow.
Okay. Well, this Sunday, August 16th, oh, is this first? Okay. I had Harry Cone Day first. Can you go to that slide? I'm sorry. I thought there were pictures. Okay, sorry. This Sunday, August 16th, is Harry Cone Day. Harry will turn 100 years old. He, last year, we celebrated his 99th birthday in person, but we're not able to do that this year due to the pandemic. But we are going to celebrate his birthday and declare August 16th, Sunday, as Harry Cone Day. He was born August 16th, 1920, grew up in Baltimore, graduated from Mount St. Joseph High School in 1938. in 1938. And he served in the U.S. Marines in 1942 and was deployed to the Pacific Theater as a machine gunner and expert rifleman. So join us in wishing Harry Cone a happy 100th birthday. Hurrah, right, Chairman?
Hurrah.
Okay, Mr. Henson. Mr. Henson adopted this beautiful calico kitten from our Superior Pets for Patriotic Pets program. And he served in the Army for four years and we thank him for giving this cute little kitten a forever home. The, the, okay, sorry, I was going to the relief grants. Tomorrow, as most of you probably know, Sprayberry Crossing, which has been on everybody's radar for 20 years, has filed for zoning application for September. And it will come to the Planning Commission September 1st and to the Board of Commissioners September 15th as currently scheduled. Tomorrow night at 6:30, I'm having a virtual community meeting to discuss the zoning process and procedures for this unusual zoning. There is a link to register online and it's been in my newsletter and posted on the Sprayberry Crossing Facebook page, pages, and also on the website. So please join us. You do need to register. It is free, but we do need you to register and submit your questions ahead of the, ahead of time. We've had three webinars so far on the phase two of the relief grants that have been opened up through the County CARES Act money and Select Cobb partnership. So tomorrow at 10 o'clock, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, Mayor Pro Tem, Michelle Cooper Kelly and I will be hosting one virtually with John Loud from the Chamber. And we ask you to join in and answer all your questions. And then I think there's one more left after tomorrow with Commissioner Gamble on Thursday.
Friday.
Friday. So you can go to selectcobb.com/Grants for more information. We still are in need of poll workers for the November election, so please contact CobbElections.org if you would like to sign up for this very important election. And then I'd like to wish Bill Johnson and the Fire Department, congratulations on being named our Fire Chief. He has served us well for the last 26 years and I'm very confident that he will continue to do so in his new role. And last but not least, my loyal assistant for 10 years, almost 10 years, Inger Eberhart, has moved on to Public Safety Department. And she has served me well and the, and the community and the public well for the last almost 10 years. But there's good news in all of this. I have a new assistant and she's here with us today and I'd like to ask Hannah Yu to come up to the podium. I know. You make your interns do it, I can make my assistant do it. So Hannah comes to us with a master's degree. She comes to us with a master's degree and lots of education and great experience at the state and federal level of government. So welcome Hannah, I'm happy as a lark to have you. And do you want to say anything?
Well, first of all, thank you for the introduction, Commissioner Burrow. I mean, I've lived in, I grew up in Marietta, so Cobb County will always be my home and I'm excited and honored to start working here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and that's all I have.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome Hannah. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chairman. And just briefly, just want to say thank you to our board for the modifications that we made to our telework policy and just the recognition that all of our employees are going through a lot right now in response to COVID and certainly our working families. And it's important that we also don't add additional burden to some of those who have additional responsibilities that could require them to be eligible for teleworking. And that additional responsibility for me and for many others is being a working parent and being a working mom. And I know that right now, especially as we contemplate the school season, this is not an easy time for many families. Many of us are scrambling to try to figure out what to do. And there are still a lot of gaps with measures that have been put forward in response to, in response to how school is going to start in the fall. So I think what we did was a small step to just, again, recognizing that we don't want to have an additional burden for our employees who are doing the best that they can to contribute to our workplace in the midst of those challenges. I'd also like to thank Jackie Bede Tepora for coming and speaking today. Even though she was one voice speaking, her voice echoes the sentiment of many of our citizens here in Cobb County who are wondering why we are not being more responsive to the pandemic when it comes to voting. I think that we have our work cut out for us to see how we can still make this as safe and healthy of a process as possible. And I think we have our work cut out for us to see how we mend whatever rift seems to have appeared with the Board of Elections on this process. You know, COVID has sparked the sentiment that we're all in this together and it, that should continue to be how we move forward, figuring out how we can work together. And so for those who are serving on our board, I certainly open the opportunity to have a conversation to figure out how things transpired the way that they did and figure out how we can be of support to ensure our citizens are able to vote safely and in a healthy fashion at, at the polls in November. Finally, today is runoff election day. If you have not voted yet by ballot or by early voting, please go out to your regular poll today. You have until 7:00 PM to cast your ballot. Also, I believe you can still drop off your ballot at any of the drop-off election sites as well. Thank you, and that's all I have for today, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First thing, Brad, before we do that, you know, Chairman, you mentioned a bunch about the different places that the board has used the CARES money for food and housing and everything. And I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of an update that I received from R.G. Stackmeyer with Star C. They have informed Judge Murphy that they will attend all the apartment eviction court sessions in August. They have 28 Cobb properties that have submitted 147 applications representing $214,811 in rental assistance so far. But the most amazing thing is some of these property owners are waiving the 30% balance that the homeowner themselves would have to pay. So the apartment owners are accepting 70%. Additionally, the management companies, they, they can start filing eviction notices that on the 10th of every month. Star C has been reaching out to the clients, the apartment clients that they've been working with, asking those landlords to prevent, or postpone the filings and work with Star C first. So what we're trying to do is, you heard Judge Murphy talk about the backlog, so Star C is working with the property owners to delay the filings, they're getting them to waive 30%. So I think that, you know, the program is accomplishing a lot of what the board was trying to do. Second thing is I want to highlight the work of IS and GIS. And Brad can put up on the screen. What you're going to see on the screen here is the Cobb County COVID-19 hub. First off, about this hub, the parent company for GIS, Esri, only had like 14 different hub pages and they took this hub and, and made a 15th one out of it. It was, they, they thought so much of it. So basically, it's a one-stop for folks to find out about the virus in the county, but also resources. Brad, if you slide down the page, you can see these different storyboards. It talks about emergency medical, it also economic restoration. One, in a partnership with the schools, you'll see the GIS for STEAM education. And the school system thought, thought so much of this that they actually added it to the curriculum page for all the teachers to have access to it. Commissioner Cooper, I know your, your boys are at home. Great science and STEAM pages here, very easy to use. The food resources, you've heard about that before. Keep going down, Brad, please. You see things about Cobb Link. And then the one that was just recently added, now you can come back up to this white map. I know the commissioners, you've been getting my emails every night, and this map here, used to have two maps. Go ahead, you can click on it now, Brad. So what you see here is the cases map by zip code. And for people not familiar with it, if, Brad, go ahead and click on one of the zip codes. What this will do is it gives you the current cases as of the 9th, because that was the last day I updated it. It also shows you the progression and that is by zip code. And obviously, the darker color now, so the folks in 30127 may be somewhat concerned because they're a darker color. So if we slide now, you take this bar and you slide it across, it will transition to the deaths by zip code map. And the little circles are actually the senior care facilities in the county. And the color of the senior care facilities determine how many deaths there have been. So if we go down to 30127 and you click on the map, go do the map first, you'll see that there were 40 deaths as of August 9th. But now if you look at the senior care facility, the single one that's in that zip code, and you click on that, you'll see that they have, they, this is, shows the number of residents, the number of deaths. So 29 of those 40 deaths were at that one facility and that was early on in the pandemic. This information I get from Cobb Douglas Public Health for the zip codes, the senior care facilities comes from the state, it's updated every couple days. So it gives you an opportunity to see exactly where in the county there are issues. And with the progression, you can see certain areas, like for example, in the center here where the Marietta is. One of the things that we use, some movement data and all that, and if you think about it, in that area, there's two Super Walmarts and there's a lot of commercial activity. So one of the things that the county has done with public health is using this information to go out and talk to some of these property owners or business owners about making sure that they practice CDC and safe distancing and masks and things like that. But this is a map that's available to anyone in the public on the hub page. And like I said, you just take the bar and slide it across and it switches between the two maps. Generally, I'm updating every couple days unless I don't have internet like I did on the weekend. And you can see the scales on the left-hand side. So a lot of useful information, like I said, the new, the two newest things are this map and then the education page, which has some really cool stuff if, if you're looking for some, some things to show your kids while you're at home. That's all I have.
Thank Commissioner Cooper, thank Commissioner Ott. And also the GIS, it's truly amazing what our IS department's done here to keep us updated on a daily basis as to what is certainly going to be the challenge of our lifetime.
One, one other thing, because Ross just sent it to me, so if you want to get to the hub, it's just www.cobbcounty.org/covid19.
Okay, thanks. Just one comment here before we adjourn here. Yesterday, the, the chamber announced the 2020 Small Business of the Year and they did a really terrific video. But 313 Salon Spa and Boutique was named as the 2020 Small Business of the Year for the Cobb Chamber. And I want to congratulate them and their magnificent team for all they do. They've been in business and accounting for, I believe, 46 years. Yeah, pretty amazing program. And with that, we adjourned. And with that, we adjourn.